...survey requirements. With this one change from what I distributed a while ago, the word says prior to the initiation of drilling, it would also add, and following completion of the hydraulic fracturing, and then all of the rest of the language there, anytime it says pre-drilling, it would also say post-drilling. So, any word says pre-drill, it would say pre or post-drill testing. If you want me to read it, I will. I believe it's what Mr. Hickman, Dr. Hickman, sorry, was referring to in the G that he was talking about.
Would you go ahead and read that to us?
I can't even pronounce some of the words, but, um, water survey requirements, I'll see if I can get it. Prior to the initiation of drilling of new vertical well bore, and following completion of the hydraulic fracturing, the operator shall contract with an independent third-party water testing company to test all existing water courses and drinking water supplies, surface and groundwater, within twenty-five hundred feet of the vertical well bore. Purpose of this requirement is to ensure that the operator takes the necessary steps to preserve both the legal presumption of responsibility and defenses to said presumption in accordance with P A, or fifty-eight P A section three-two-one-eight C E. Test requirements, tests shall include at a minimum D E P suite code SAC nine forty-six methane dissolved B T X. Do I have to read all the chemicals?
No.
Naturally occurring radioactive materials, technological events, naturally occurring radioactive materials, volatile organic compounds, in the event that future D E P utilizes a suite code for testing water for suspecting contamination. From drilling that's more inclusive than suite code SAC nine forty-six, tests shall include any additional sample parameters, including a more additional suite code. Notification of residents, operators shall notify all residents who own property in or have private well water within twenty-five hundred feet of a vertical well bore whenever completion, I'm sorry, whenever the latter of completion drilling simulation, revaluation, unconventional well has occurred, the purpose of this notification is to ensure residents are aware at the beginning of the twelve-month period in which an occurrence of pollution results in presumption that the operators are responsible for some pollution under fifty-eight P A three-two-eight one C. Costs, operators shall assume all costs associated with the pre and post-drill testing required by this section. For lab and result requirements, the operators shall retain an independent certified laboratory to conduct the required pre and post-drill testing. Copy of the test results shall be provided by certified laboratory, the D E P and landowner. That's my motion.
Do we have a motion?
Add your question, President.
Do we have a second?
It's up to you whether you want to allow that without a second, or if you can second it and ask a question and can get voted down if you don't like it.
I'll second. Go ahead and make a question.
My question, Jay, the sections one, two, three, four, you know, the subsections one to three, four, test requirements through that, uh, the requirements, did those come from fifty-eight P A thirty-two eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
So, do we need to write them out, or can you just reference them? Does there need to explicitly reiterate all that?
The reason I suspect it was proposed this way, and that I think it is a good thing to reiterate it, even noting that we put in language that says, if it changes, this changes with it, is to help reassure the township of at least some level of testing that's going on. And I think if you simply reference something in the state code, that doesn't resonate with people.
Yeah, it doesn't resonate with people, but the problem with it, Jay, is it's a nightmare. And you just demonstrated why, because nobody understands it or has a clue exactly what any of that stuff means.
I just said I couldn't pronounce it.
No, I don't care to have it explained, though, thank you.
Gosh. There's a blanket statement right there.
Yeah, the point is, the point is, it's already covered by the state, and I don't see where the township should put themselves in a position to be liable for somebody's water.
Well, this, this doesn't do either of those things in my judgment.
Can I ask Mr. Brado a question? If we explicitly pull out the language from that, you know, section thirty-two eighteen, and make it part of our ordinance explicitly, does that put the onus on us then to enforce it?
Well, it's, it's directly in your ordinance, and, and the only thing is that if that particular section were ever struck down, you know, by a court of law, then obviously that issue would be addressed in the Washington Township ordinance. However, that's why we have the severability clause, so it wouldn't totally invalidate the entire ordinance. I like to see items in black and white as opposed to a citation to a specific law or section, so not getting into the drafting of the, the content as to what Mr. Mike proposed, I, I like, you know, for me, seeing is believing, I guess.
Seeing what?
I would prefer to see something written out of the ordinance.
Right, well, how do we enforce that? When somebody walks in the door and says, you're not enforcing your ordinance, and therefore this, 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 and this is basically out of line, how, how do we, how do we enforce that?
May I respond?
Yeah.
There are several ways.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, the lawyer's sitting out there, how, how do, how do you enforce that?
You, you enforce it like you do every single other ordinance that's adopted by the township.
Would we have to, would we have to have expert opinion come in and bear witness as to the water quality and determine whether or not, in fact, the claim is what it is?
Well, when you say expert witness, where, where are you talking? Are you talking about an engineering firm, or are you talking about just having?
Water quality, a water quality testing firm.
Okay.
So, I mean, whose expense is that? The resident or the township's?
How, how, how are you planning on addressing it?
Raspberry?
Yes, you may.
With respect, we're dealing with a red hearing here. This differs from two thousand fourteen in two, at least crucial ways. One is it doesn't spell out nearly as many things to test, nor does it include soil testing. The other thing is, it does not require the township to be involved in the testing or the certification of the testing. It simply says, the company must get a certified lab to do the testing. So, as I read it, the township's liability is simply making sure that the operator gets the testing and gets it done.
I want you to say just that. As opposed to listing all the criteria, that, that opens a door for somebody to challenge whether or not we're in compliance with our ordinance or not.
Well, again.
I mean, I'm not against water testing, and I'm not against, you know, people being totally assured that, that they have good water. I, I just think that the state already does that. And once we get involved in it.
The state doesn't mandate that this get done. Any gas company with any sense will do it, because it's their presumption of defense. Again, we can't write in ordinance, however much we may or may not trust the two companies who we know are leased in the township, nothing says those are the only two companies who will ever be here, or that they won't sell their leases, and they can't guarantee it, and we can't make them. And so, it seems to me that saying, in case somebody comes in who doesn't want to do it, you must do the testing, here's the minimum things you have to test for. If somebody raises a question, the township's liability, as I read this, and the solicitor can correct me, is, the company certified us it was done, and the results were sent to the landowners. You don't like those results, then you're after the lab, not the township.
Well, why don't they come in and say, okay, well, we've done the test, we've done exactly what you expected us to do, and that's all we're gonna do? And the landowner comes in and says, my water's polluted, and that's something that you didn't test for, who's liable? The township, because we didn't have it any ordinance, or the state?
I'm not a lawyer, I don't play one on television, you will act as the solicitor that much.
It's no, it's no different than when you have a third-party, uh, independent company come in and do a noise study, you know, it, it's no different. They're, they're professionals, they're experts, they're not gonna risk their credentials because they wanna see a, a test go one way or another.
Yeah, but a noise, a noise study is, you know, you get a specific level.
I know, but I'm drawing, I'm drawing a parallel for you in an instance where, where this occurs. If there's a noise problem.
That's black and white.
But, but, no, no, it's really not black and white, because the, the company will go and they'll hire their own expert, and their expert will provide all the data and reports and, and everything that's necessary to evaluate it.
But, but what if, what if, what if you list all these things, and there's some pollutant that falls outside of the scope of what we've listed?
Well.
And, and, and they say, you didn't, you didn't make us do that, therefore, we're not on, not on the hook for it.
Listen, just let me remind the, the commission one thing, you're, you're a recommending body, you don't have the final say. This has to go to the Lawrence County Planning Commission, this is gonna have to come back to the township supervisors for a public hearing, and, and if the township supervisors so choose to write that in the ordinance, they have the ability to do so. You know, this, this gentleman's providing the information, he's making a recommendation it was seconded, you know, we could debate it all night, I, I think, you know, the, the fiber, you're gonna have to take a vote on it, as to whether you want it in or not.
But I think there is a crucial difference, and that's the question of whether they can make a substantive amendment without getting comment from us first.
Well, I'm not taking you out of the procedure.
No, no, I understand that, I'm just saying, I'm not sure with respect legally, that it's quite as clear as they can make whatever changes they want.
They can make the changes that they wanna make, and, and it'll have to be vetted back through the, the system, which, you know, that's why we're here tonight.
And, and part of my view is it's easier to give them the language, and if they don't like it, have them take it out than it is to try and put it in later.
And my concern is, obviously, that if you put the language in there, and somebody comes in the door with something differently than what we called for, who's on the hook?
Listen, like I said earlier, two honor rollers in a complaint, anybody can sue you. So, you've been at this for a number of months, maybe close to a number of years, you know, it, it's, the ball's in your court.
Can I ask Mr. Lucas, is this something that is done as a standard anyway, a standard business practice? You can always speak to your client, I'm sure.
Here's my understanding, and I defer to environmental lawyers, and that's process a little more, but the state law provides that the operator doesn't do the testing, there'll be a presumption that, you know, a contaminant comes up later that they caused it, they can disprove it, but, I mean, but the burden's on them. So, first, because of that, it's, it's a high incentive for all operators to test for certain constituents that might arise out of their operations, because it provides protection to them. They have to offer that to property owners within twenty-five hundred feet, if they have a private water well. One thing you have to keep in mind here, the property owner could refuse, and so I don't know what, I haven't seen the exact language we're talking about here, does it take into account the fact that, you know, you're compelling an operator that you have to do testing, and a property owner could conceivably refuse? Now, if they do the testing, the, the property owner gets the results, and then if there's after the, the, during or after the, the activity is completed, there's a complaint lodged with D E P that, hey, I think the operator contaminated my water, my understanding is what happens in practice is that the operator and D E P will arrange for what's called a split sampling, you know, so they can both test it, and then depending on the results of that, D E P, if it concludes that the operator was responsible for contamination, they'll order whatever relief they deem appropriate, whether it's replacement water source, whatever. So, I don't, I don't believe, however, that every operator tests for exactly the same thing. I mean, they use their discretion on what they want to use, and I, I listed with red off, or it's included here, I have no idea whether that's consistent or inconsistent with what either Hill Corp, Chevron, or any other operator does.
And to add to that, you, you have a baseline, you know, that, that essentially would give you a baseline, that if there is a complaint that's lodged later down the road, and it, it's consistent with what was originally test, tested, I, I think it more or less alleviates any line of going.
I have a question that.
Mr. Brado, are you recommending that we have something in there on water testing, or no?
Well, you know, I, I don't, I didn't come here, and, and don't confuse, you know, my statement, I didn't come here to, um, how can I put it?
Law.
Well, to, to, to give any influence, because, you know, you're, you're representative of the people, you're, you're appointed by the, the supervisor, you're representative of the people, so whatever you so choose to, to do, uh, within the confines of the law, I, I, I mean, I, I'll, I'll deal with it appropriately. I understand this legislation was previously submitted, and for whatever reason, it didn't make it into the, the ordinance, and I'm sure that Attorney Solomon looked at it carefully and at, at some point in time, but, um, whatever you recommend, I mean, I, I'll review it, and I won't have a problem voicing my opinion if it's problematic. So, for me to say, I, yes or no, I, I, I won't give you that, but, um, I can, I can live with it either way. But, the thing about it is, the point that I have to impress upon you, it's providing a baseline. And, and some of the other communities, they have a public water system, it's either piped in by P A American, or it's piped in by Aqua. Your situation out here is, is a little more different, you don't, you don't have that.
There's no legal issue, because it says all existing drinking water supplies, what if a landowner, where the site is going in, says no? By the nature of an aquifer, you now have big, you now have taken out, you're going to test, basically, you can't comply with the all part.
Yeah.
What do we do if somebody doesn't want testing done? We can't then, we can't meet this burden, so.
Well, I don't think you can force, I don't think you can.
You can't force somebody, so should we put something in just that?
And, and listen. Just one, real quick, Jay, and I, and I'll, I'll shut it down. You know, I've come to these meetings, and people keep talking about Mahoning Township, Mahoning Township, Mahoning Township, and the noise. Well, the issue is, the issue is because the property owners refused to let Hill Corp own their property to conduct a noise study. It, it's not that there's a problem with the compressor, it, it's a problem because the, the individual property owners wouldn't let them test, and, and, and that's an issue. We're not gonna force Hill Corp to go on someone's property, we're not gonna force township officials to go on private property, so you may wanna take a look at the what-if, if somebody refuses.
I don't think the word all implies we have to be a hundred percent compliance, and that may not be possible.
And, and I, I would say that, that, um, you know, if there would be a refusal, then, then that's the, the.
The individual.
The onus is on the, the individual, they, they, they bear the, the, the risk.
That's a legal question. You know, that may already be in section.
Mr. Chairman, I move an amendment to my motion, okay? I move that if the, that we add a number five, that would read, if the landowner refuses in writing or orally in the presence of the township zoning officer to allow the testing on their property, the operator shall not be responsible for carrying out the requirements of this section with regard to that property.
Would that have to be on the resuming officer, or in ready?
There's no question about it.
If we don't do that, then you got a he said, she said about who said what, this way it's clear, it's either in writing, signed by the property owner, or.
I agree.
If they keep saying no, then the company calls their township zoning officer, and the person says no before the township zoning officer, and now we've got an official who can certify that the property owner said no, even if they didn't wanna put it in writing.
We have a motion in second to add that to. Any other, uh, how much of questions here, maybe one?
We're going on the amendment, that's all that's before us. It's the amendment to the amendment, that number five.
Okay, we have a motion, do, we have a motion, do we, do we have a second to that?
Second.
All in favor of adding the amendment to the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Opposed. Do you want your vote recorded?
Yep.
Now, we're on the main motion, which is to add the whole amendment.
Okay.
Would require water testing, it does not require soil, soil testing.
Okay, we have a, a motion in second, all in favor of adding this amendment to the ordinance.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any else? All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed?
The nays out.
Wait a second.
Who was the vote?
Who was the vote?
Three to. Three.
Who voted in favor of the motion?
Two in favor, three in.
Whoa, 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 whoa. We've not historically recorded votes unless someone asks for the vote to be recorded. If you're telling us we must have a roll call vote, then we have to do it. He rolled, he rolled that the nays had it, and none of us objected to that.
Okay, I, I didn't hear, I didn't hear all the nays.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that my affirmative vote be recorded.
It may.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to get upset. I heard her ask, is, did you roll it? Okay.
Okay, anything else?
I'd like to go through that. So, we have, um, the comments from Mr. Lucas, who was here today, we got, uh, all have a copy of their markup. Okay, page three.
Uh, they've got stuff on page two.
Uh, that, that was cleared because we deleted, whereas, so that's gone. Uh, page three, um, one hundred point seven-nine I, closed fluid containment system. I think we could delete that, and, and make, uh, closed loop fluid containment system one hundred point seven-nine I instead of J.
I'm not certain, oh, I'm sorry, but I'm not certain they're really the same thing. My memory is in two thousand fourteen, they accepted definitions, because we found that they were somewhat different.
I don't see how they are. I mean, I read it twice, and I, I, I mean.
It's closed, closed loop, yeah?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, I, I, when I read it, the specificity is just not there to give me a sense of exactly what the difference is.
Closed loop, these three cycles, and we use this if you read the last sentence, is that closed loop, that's the difference.
The closed loop is the one we want.
That recycles.
Correct. The one above it is just hanging there, I don't see where it does a damn thing, really. I mean, it's in there, but it's just, it's, it's a meaningless, almost a meaningless statement, it's relative to the one below it.
Integrity says, I should say, I think J is more restrictive than I, and if you wanna make it more restrictive, you're not gonna get an objection from me, but honesty compels me to say, I think.
I, I agree.
You're gonna make it way more restrictive.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, I agree. So, get rid of that, get rid of I and, uh, as it is, and substitute, and take J to.
The more restrictive one.
Correct.
As the.
Correct.
Default.
And in that second one, uh, in J, which we're gonna change to I, a system for storing and separating wastes.
Instead of.
Out waste. Delete out. Separate out, it's cut.
Cut, that's.
I think it was cut.
Cut, okay, whatever, gotcha. So, you want me to make a motion? Want me to move it? I'll move, we delete one hundred point seven-nine I, and change one hundred point seven-nine J to the one hundred point seven-nine I.
And delete the word cut?
And delete the word cut. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm losing amendment, which is that we note that this is at the suggestion of the attorney for Hill Corp.
Add that in the.
It doesn't, I don't mean for it to go into the ordinance, I mean for it to go into our minutes.
So, you want a motion to that effect?
I just made it.
I'll second it.
All in favor of the amendment to the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
We did skip.
Add that, add that in the minutes.
We skipped the one for H, the comment about accept as permitted by forty CFR part sixty-three.
Did we vote on the main motion yet?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, all, all in favor of, we have a motion and second, we were talking about it, all in favor of, uh, the amendment to get rid of seventy-nine I, replace it with seventy-nine J, and change it to I.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Wait, did you vote no?
Oh, no, it is.
And you only got one vote, not three.
I agree, yes, yes, it is. Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, page four.
But we did skip the seventy-nine H.
What, reduce the mission.
Reduce, except it's permitted by forty CFR, like.
That's, that was eliminated, it's part of the where ads.
No, 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 right here, just about close, go to the next page.
Oh, seventy-nine eight.
Right there.
Oh. Oh, bingo, okay.
We, if it's permitted by forty CFR.
So, you wanna add that in? Why not?
Is that okay?
No.
Just move what we think we should do.
I, I move that we include the accept as permitted by forty CFR, with the notation in the minutes that it was.
I'm not worried about it.
You're not, okay, okay.
I'm just worried about it there.
Okay, let's find that. Accept as permitted by forty CFR part sixty-three and other applicable federal and state statutes and regulations, that way it keeps us up to date with anything that might be changing, and becoming even more restrictive.
I'll, I'll second that.
We have a motion and second to add a phrase to the end, to the end of seventy-nine H, just putting it back with forty CFR, sounds like it was, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Okay, uh, page four. You guys see the clarification there?
Under which one?
Uh, eight hundred twenty-one point one-eight.
Yes, with walls and roots.
Yeah.
Off the part of walls and roots.
Yeah.
I disagree with it, we already have a definition of building in the ordinance, putting another one in here is just gonna confuse things. The main ordinance to which this is an amendment defines building.
But the difference is existing versus like a temporary.
Well, but that's not the, the, that's a second issue.
Okay.
I mean, the first one is occupied structures with walls and roots.
Yeah, but the second one, I think, is a good clarification, in terms of the date existing as reference factor.
If I could maybe move it along, the first one was just an attempt to make it consistent with the definition in Act thirteen, it's, it's not material, so.
Okay.
But the other one, existing, is, is mine.
Which is eight hundred twenty-one point one-eight.
The point is, you know, about how existing, um, constructed, constructed occupied as of the date of initial conditional use application.
Okay.
Which clarifies.
Yep.
We're gonna stick around, we're gonna stick with our definition of building.
Yep. But add that last sentence.
But add, I move that we add, for purpose of section eight hundred twenty-one point one, existing bench, I mean, a building constructed and occupied as of the date of the initial conditional use application for a well site.
Just second that.
Twenty-one point one-A does not say existing building.
If the, the chart, you added the word existing before building on the chart.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there, okay.
I think we wanna be really careful here. I think this is saying way more than we're suggesting. A, it adds the word occupied, so if there's a house that's not occupied.
Nobody said, don't worry about the occupied and the well.
Look at the last. Look at the last sentence that we're adding, for purpose of section blah blah, existing building shall mean a building constructed and occupied as of the date of the additional, original conditional use occupation. So if a house is for sale and it's empty-
You're correct.
It's not covered by this. Second, what do you do with a building that's under construction, which is not constructed as of the date?
We're trying to avoid this, I'm just throwing up a little shack.
I understand that.
So how do you, how is a better way to put, put?
I don't know, I just know this isn't it.
Okay, okay, that's fair.
I'm not nearly as worried about it.
A building, under construction as of the date. Constructed or under construction.
That brings back another question. In normal circumstances, not even involving this, when is a building considered to be a building? When it's started, when it's, uh, completed, or, I have no idea.
Do you have the final inspection or what?
Or when somebody's living at. But it's-
It's still a building, even if nobody's living at, but-
It's ten forty at night, that's a question, seems to me, that's not material to this particular- I'm, I'm not arguing about whether we should deal with the last sentence.
Okay.
But when is a building a building, it's defined in our ordinance, it has a roof.
Okay.
Nice. So what do we want to do with this?
I just think some how to tie was existing at the date of the application.
Well, we'll just leave it as it was.
Okay, we just presume it goes to the date of application. So if somebody makes an application, somebody throws a building, it's all correct.
It's a block.
It's a block. You know, they put a shed, you know, it's not a building that it doesn't mean a-
I move, try this, for the purpose of section eight hundred twenty-one point one, existing buildings shall mean a building for which a building permit has been issued prior to the date of the additional, of the initial conditional use application to the well site.
That's good.
That's good.
Because it's fine. You can't sit on it.
Well, it affects bill.
Yep.
Great, but I mean, you can't sit on a building for a year.
That works.
Okay, that's fine.
Can you write that down, Jay?
Well, eventually I will.
Okay, don't even bother. I second that, Jay.
We have a motion and second.
So I withdraw my prior motion and something.
Trying to get that written down here.
I thought I can re-read my reading.
Yeah, Professor, you're not supposed to be over there reading.
Okay, so what I have is we would add a new last sentence to eight hundred twenty-one point one A. That would read, for purpose of section eight hundred twenty-one point one, existing buildings shall mean a building for which a building permit has been issued prior to the date of the initial conditional use application for the well site.
You got it?
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and second to add that line, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes.
Now they, again, honesty compels me to say there's another one on page four.
What's that?
The very next paragraph.
The owner of the property may waive setback requirements relative to a property line, existing building, water well, public water supply intake, or residential or commercial district boundary, so long as the setback is no less than a hundred feet for a conventional well and too many feet for an unconventional well. Whoever set forth and writing recorded at the county courthouse, which is now the largest county government center.
Yeah.
So you want to do that one too?
If, if the issue is adding existing, I have no problem with it, I have a huge problem with saying an individual property owner can waive a setback tied to residential or commercial districts. Because the whole point of that is to provide a buffer from areas that under our zoning, we've said are intended to be for residential or commercial use. And I don't think an individual property owner can waive that buffer. Or should be able to waive that buffer. That's a community-wide issue. That's different from, I'm, I'm an individual property owner right next to a well site, in my judgment.
I see your point.
I see your point too.
I agree.
I'll, I'll dispute that.
So it just stays as is?
Yep.
Well, do we want to add the word existing to be clear?
Yes.
If that's a big deal.
Be consistent. So I'll move to add the word, uh, existing to eight hundred point two, two, one, point one B.
But not the, but not the per, uh-
Correct. Just existing.
We have a motion and second to add the word existing. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Page six.
Maximum permission to noise level shall be measured at the nearest existing building for temporary site construction, drilling, completion activities, and at the property lines for all permanent activities, that, that was the Dallas Hardman issue. I think that was Dallas's issue. Well, well, he, he wanted, he wanted to use property lines.
Correct.
Yeah, but for permanent, permanent activities as opposed to what would be temporary, which is site construction.
I'm opposed to this change. We've already heard that you can have site construction that goes on for a long time as you drill different bores. And we're going to allow sixty decibels and allow drilling through the night, it sure seems to me that sixty is a reasonable maximum at the property line. If somebody wanted to say no drilling at night and allow this, that might be a reasonable trade-off. But especially at night, saying sixty decibels at a building, which means that if I want to sit out in my backyard, if I had a bigger backyard and I've got a-
And the property line is always going to be closer than the building?
Yep. Has to be.
Okay.
By definition, buildings have backs, except, well, in Ag, I guess they can be the same, because there's no rear yard setback.
When you're top of property line, is that individual property or the line of the unit?
Individual property line?
Individual property.
If I'm understanding your question correctly, John, do you-
Yeah.
You, what do you mean by the line of the unit? That shouldn't be answered.
About, about the noise level.
Right. What do you mean when you use the term line of the unit?
Line of the unit, that- The square mile. That, the square mile of six hundred and forty acres or twelve eighty or whatever. That, that line basically for the one unit, is that the?
All, all ordnance, our ordinance says it's at the property line, so any property line that abuts the property on which drilling is taking place or has taken place, this noise requirement has to be met. At the property line.
So, quick question for you, though, what if, your situation, I don't know if this is what, uh, Mr. Butler was getting at. You know, well, has on one property, it's certain distance away from the next property over, the next property owner is in the unit, has no problem with the noise level. Uh, if, if you're going to have that, would it be appropriate to have a waiver provision here in that instance?
For temporary.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yes, that's-
That's for temporary, not for permanent.
Only for temporary activity.
I mean, if you're going to continue to measure the property lines most of the building, would a waiver provision make sense, because that's up to the individual property owner, maybe a beneficiary in, in a unit in a lease doesn't have a problem with the, that, that noise level?
So many words.
We just don't have to tie it though, that if, say they sold that property during the course of drilling, they would probably have to default back to property line, so, well, um, to the new owner, because the new owner didn't break the rights, we'd abide assuming that's where it is. Pretty tight, I don't know.
Yeah.
Let's leave it, leave it as it is, yeah.
Longer later.
I tend to agree. Or better, I leave it as it is.
So it's leaving it at sixty decibels at the property line, it's not allowing that to be waived, to be allowed.
Page seven. Operator.
You made that correction already.
Yeah, that was the and or.
Yep.
I resent that remark. I'm not going to come up here and be insulted, sitting in the audience.
Yes, you are.
No, no. He's acting like the citizen.
Okay, quiet down back there, please.
We're not allowed to make remarks. I resent that remark.
Well, I'm sorry, but this has been going on for over a year.
I resent that remark.
That he just dictates what gets done.
I resent that remark.
Well, I'm sorry.
Especially from a brethren from Westminster, I resent that.
No, I'm sorry, you resent that.
But, just knock it off.
Hey, so we're all clear. What he proposed didn't get passed.
No, it was, my, my warning remark to me-
I, I understand that, I'm not, I'm not debating that, I didn't hear it, I just want everybody to be clear, given the last comments, what Mr. Lucas just proposed did not pass. No variant of it passed.
That was a part of the remark.
That's fine, that was just the comment that was made, and I just want everyone to be clear.
Okay, on page eight, number five. I think, what do we do, we leave it?
We don't, we don't have to move anything, we left it.
We, no, we didn't, we changed that definition.
We did, didn't we?
No, I'm sorry, it's back in the noise part.
Correct, correct.
No, I'm sorry, I'm back.
Correct, there's no motion, so that didn't change.
So I've got page eight, and, uh, I'm on number five. And we deleted the, um-
The closed.
Yeah, yeah, correct, we deleted, so we just need to change all these.
I move that we make the changes noted in number five on page eight.
That's good.
Which simply-
I'll second that.
Just for the audience, takes out any reference to closed fluid containment system, only talks about closed loop fluid containment, and does say this doesn't-
Prevents stormwater.
Correct.
I second that.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, reduce the mission.
Yeah.
People in favor, it was ayes.
Aye.
Yeah, well, those are-
Yeah, all. I don't see any problem with leaving number six the way it is, if we repeat ourselves, we repeat ourselves.
Okay.
There's no certainty.
Leave that alone. All right.
Number seven?
I am not in favor of this change, screening is not just for noise, it's also for aesthetics. That's why we have it in our land development ordinance, and these things are going to come with the buildings as land developments, and seems to me they ought to have the same screening that any other-
You guys are familiar with section nine sixteen, right? Because I'm not.
Well, that requires all, all, all kinds of vegetative screening, which at least, particularly as it relates to construction drilling activity, is not realistic. I mean, you can't screen a rig, uh, you know.
With, with, with trees. I don't know, it's, doesn't it say that, that's what I'm saying, I'm not familiar with nine sixteen.
Nine sixteen just says where screening is required, this is what we were going through with North Memorial. It says where screening is required, here's what they shall consist of.
But it doesn't have to be all of the above, right? It can be any part thereof.
Nobody in the rest of the world.
Well, it is a fence.
Right, so they could use a fence.
It would be part of the conditional use application, I would say here's reasonable screening.
Okay, so they'll say, they'll say fence and, and, and nobody's going to impose trees, bushes, or anything else on a, on a well pad. Right?
Well, that's not clear. That's why we raised the question.
I, I guess, that's why I'm sitting here, because I, um, I would oppose that if it were a fence, maybe, but if it's the rest of it, I don't think so. But that's not in black and white.
It just says, has to be six feet high, it doesn't say it has to be the whole height.
Okay, and it doesn't say what?
Who is to enforce that, is that our zoning enforcement officer? It's like, I know the cheese factory, that's nothing to enforce. They, they never even thought of the stormwater.
Okay. All right, so, now we did, especially, we got the conditional use at the bottom of the page, right?
The what?
The conditional use. Page eight. Oh, I'm sorry, miscellaneous provisions relating to gasoline. That, that was, I'm sorry, we did that, we did.
So you're not doing anything on screening? Or you are?
There was no motion made to change anything.
Well, we satisfied that what we read in the nine sixteen doesn't imply vegetation. Somebody tell me that. Because this says where necessary to prevent excessive noise, well sites shall be screened from adjoining properties and public streets by mounding soil, solid fencing, and/or green, screen plantings in compliance with section nine sixteen of this ordinance. Excessive noise shall be defined as noise levels greater than those permitted by the, by this ordinance.
Now, the red, that's our, that's weird.
Part of the problem is the screening is put on, is applied to just noise, and I agree, Jay, it's partly aesthetic too. So, and dust and those sort of things too.
That's not what mine have to say.
Well-
Mine doesn't say anything about noise.
You know, guys, even, even though it's a-
I got mine from the supervisor, I don't know.
Anything about noise was added later.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct, it was, it was, it was a red, yes, it was a red, you're right.
You know, guys-
I would take the reading to say that the compliance with section nineteen refers to screen plantings only, because nine sixteen says when screen plantings are required by this ordinance. And so I think the only reasonable way to read it is to say mounding soil, or solid fencing, or screen plantings, and the screen plantings are required have to be in light of nine sixteen. Because nine sixteen doesn't deal with, I don't believe, um, fencing or mounding. It only deals with what happens if you have to have plantings.
So what are we doing with it?